Called this meeting of council to order today, March 2nd, 2021, City Hall. I have an addition to the agenda, the audit report from Adams and Brown. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? I'm gonna put that about before the department heads. We're gonna talk to that and we're going to talk about the, we're gonna discuss the bonds before department heads.
Mayor, do you have, do you have my executive for employee ballot? Okay.
Yes. We got rid of one of them, correct. Okay, are there any other additions to the agenda? Any good emotion, please? Have a motion in a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Here, is there any citizens comments this evening? Okay, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, February 16th, 2021. Have a motion in a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 3, 2, 2021, the amount of $75,369.79. Have a motion in a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Hempel Oil, in the amount of $14,337.85. Have a motion in a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Larry Kleeman, the bond split.
Actually, I get my hand out here. Actually, this is colorful page numbers, so let me just go ahead and hand out mine.
Everybody got one?
Anybody else got plenty? Yeah, this is for the electric generator purchase. We had, we authorized the bond sale last month, and so we had the bond sale this morning, 11 o'clock, bids arrived here on page one. And we had four bids. Interest rates been historically low for the past year, and they start to edge up a little bit, they're still nicely low. What each of these bidders does is put interest rates between the maturities. It's a 10-year bond from 2022 to 2031. And then we tally up the average interest rate and figure in the discount, which is basically the underwriter profit in dollars they're keeping, to come up with the bottom line or the bottom average net interest rate. That's how we determine which bid is best. And so highlighted there in yellow, Central States Capital Markets at Prairie Village, Kansas, had the best bid, 1.1327%. Everybody else is pretty closely behind, but Central States had the best bid there. So yeah, their interest rates range from 0.3% for the first year maturity down up to 1.25% in the 10th year there. And they're keeping $7,920. That's built into the bond. And so yeah, their average interest rate then is 1.13% for the 10 years. And that's page, shows the debt service schedule based on the bid. And actually, originally advertised as 720,000, 720,000. We include a certain amount of money in there for the underwriter profit. They didn't use all of it, so we actually lowered the bond issue from 720 down to 710. And so this is the annual debt service. And interest payment is twice a year, April and October, then a larger principal payment in October each year. And then the far, far right, you see the fiscal total, so you'll have to, that's the amount you'll budget each year for the two payments. The bonds have a payment this coming this October, but we put that interest payment in the bond itself, so you don't have to worry about having budgeted that. That's already there. So you'll have to budget this summer for the 2022 payments. And so you're seeing roughly $75,000 each year. Page three, this has, shows where the money's going. It's in $710,000. For your project, we had you down for 675 and 500. And the remaining amounts are basically cost of issuance, underwriters' profit, and other cost of issuance, which are detailed down below, our financial advisory fee, bond counsel, and a few other fees, attorney general, state treasurer, they all have some fees in there. So that shows where the money is going. To approve all of this, pages four and five, basically the first pages, page four is the first page of the ordinance that authorizes the bonds to be issued. And then page five is the first page of a much longer resolution, which has the details of the bonds, such as interest rates, call features, I think we have it callable in eight years. And then the last page is just the calendar that we've been showing you the past few months. So we're here at the bottom, March 2nd. Tonight, you can approve the bond documents, and then we'll get everything signed. And then we'll plan to close or transfer the funds on March 18th, a few weeks down the road. At the bottom, I threw in some suggested motions. I, this number one's kinda unique because Jamie went on vacation today, so. The bond attorney wanted somebody with this title of the deputy or acting city clerk, so discussion with Jamie and Pam and everybody, the thought was designating Pam as an acting city clerk, so she can sign all these. But we don't have to email it down to Jamie in Florida or whatever, and have her try to sign and email it back to us. And then the other motions, number two, accept the best bid from Central Capital, Central States Capital Markets. And numbers three and four, just approve the bond ordinance and bond resolution. Questions on the numbers? The process? And I'm gonna, Pam, were you thinking you'd keep, you would keep all the documents here until you get them all signed and notarized and everything?
Yeah, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's perfect. And then you can just scan them in and then mail them?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Any questions, guys, otherwise?
Did the ordinance look okay, John?
You guys got what you need all?
Yeah.
Means it looked okay to you?
If it does get called, I mean, that doesn't have any real effect on.
Say that again?
If it does get called in eight years.
That's, that's the option for you guys at City. For example, if rates drop down for the past, uh, which they could drop that low probably. I mean, if you, the reason you might call it is if interest rates are low enough that you save money, and so that's the main thing, is to refund the bonds.
We would have that option in year eight.
Right. Or if you just have excess funds, you can call it early. They're in year eight and pay it off early instead of paying year nine and year 10.
Okay.
But yeah, the call feature is your basis option.
The numbers seem okay to me, and we can swing that.
John, does it make any difference where this ordinance says providing for the levy collection of an annual tax?
That's standard in every general obligation bond ordinance, just because it is a general obligation of the city. If you don't have the finances or the money and some other fund, bondholders can go to court and say, hey, you better levy property taxes. That's just the standard language. But you can pay it court however you want to pay it.
I didn't know if that tied this to anything or not, it was all.
As far as increasing taxes, more?
Right. Can we just set what fund that comes out of, whenever or now, or does it say in here?
You can set it now if you want to.
I think your annual budgeting process, you can designate where you, where you want those funds to come from that go into your principal and interest bond.
We'll just set that later.
Yeah, so you can, you can transfer it from wherever you want. It's from your electric fund.
I think the numbers are good. Looks better than what we thought.
We're getting lots of nice little bids. Starting to creep up a little bit, not very quickly.
It's really good, uh, numbers from Central State.
Yeah.
Okay, council?
It doesn't really matter, any of those four that we choose from, of course, the best one, but you don't recommend, like, one's not better than the other. I mean, they're all recommended.
Well.
Central States is fine.
Central States is, is the best interest rate, the lowest interest cost, so we recommend, yeah, taking that one. Otherwise, you know, you might annoy some other bidders. If you're not gonna take the lowest bid in the future, it might not look good.
Yeah.
Okay, council, if everything looks okay to everyone, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Do we do one at a time or?
Let's do that first.
I'd make a motion to designate Pam Watson as acting city clerk.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And then, let me see where that. Do we need to just include the interest on that? How do we do that, John?
Just a motion, accept that.
Accept the bid, the best bid from Central State.
Yeah, correct.
I'd make a motion to accept the best, the bid from Central States Capital Markets.
Have a motion in a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1077-21, authorizing and providing the issuance of general obligation bonds.
Second. Have a motion in a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And then I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution 2021-04 prescribing the form and details of and authorizing direct in the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds.
Second. Have a motion in a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
All right, thanks, guys. I'll get in touch with Pam and Jamie.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pam, I'll need to sign the summary.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Tom. Good evening. Okay, moving on to audit report from Adam.
One area that has Jamie's name on it still, and he said he was an evil over corrected companies, it doesn't say acting, it says Jamie.
Okay, moving on to audit report from Adam Brown. Danielle Olshet?
Yes. Do I, can I sit here? Do you want me to? Doesn't matter. All right. I'm gonna go through the two letters first that are kind of stuck in there. These are recommendation letters, and depending on the internal control deficiency of the recommendation is which letter it gets put on. The governance letter, I'm gonna go over first. It basically just tells us if we had any disagreements with management or any findings or issues, and we did not have anything or any recommendations that needed to be made this year, so there's nothing on the governance letter. And then on the management letter, this, the only one we have on this one is for proper segregation of duties, and we've talked about this in the past. Due to the size of the city, you won't be getting rid of that one probably, so that one is on the management letter. So then I will move on over to the audit report. And starting with pages one, two, and three, this is our independent auditor's report. And on page two, in the second and third paragraph, we issue an adverse opinion on GAAP, and that's because you as a council weigh GAAP every year and approve to do a regulatory basis of accounting audit. So the third paragraph down is where we are issuing an unmodified opinion on K-MAG or regulatory basis. And basically, we're stating that we don't believe there are any material misstatements in the financials, and that's the highest opinion you can receive, and that's the goal you're going for, so. You turn to page four, this is the actual financial statement that we're issuing that opinion on, is all of your funds collectively together, you pooled all of your cash. So at the end of the year, your ending unencumbered cash balance is $4,075,682. That is an increase over the prior year of about $346,000. So you had a cash increase throughout the year. And if you look at the funds just real quickly, you can see that most of it's in your electric and waterworks fund. The next several pages are our accounting policies and footnotes that go with that financial statement. K-MAG did not have any significant changes to the footnotes, so I won't go through each one of those, but one thing I did want to, did want to touch on is on page 11. We have a footnote in there, it's required for COVID. It's not necessarily saying there's any liability to the city right now, but because of the uncertainties with COVID, you had to put a footnote in your financial statement, so that will be new compared to the prior years. We also review statutes and make sure that the city is following all of Kansas statutes. We did not have any violations, so you won't see anything in there for that. On page 12 is your long-term debt footnote, and at the end of the year, you ended with a balance of $933,500, and you are expected to pay that full balance off in 2033. Page 13 is a budget to actual expenditure, just a real quick recap of it. You did not have any budget violations, and that's what that page is showing you. And then the next several pages are each individual fund compared to the prior year, and I don't necessarily wanna go through each one of those funds unless you have specific questions. One of the things I do like to just mention is I like to look at your utility funds just to make sure you're not in the negative on the utility funds. And on pages 28 is your water and light fund, and at the end of the year, you had receipts over expenditures of $31,000, and that was with transferring out a good chunk of that for the savings that you had for your new contract. So your water and light fund is looking good. Your service fund is on page 30. Again, it was in the positive this year, and you transferred quite a bit out of it as well to your reserve funds, so it's looking pretty good. And I believe that was it. I know it's really fast for first time viewing, but.
Council, have any questions?
All the funds look like they've gone on except for the parks and recreation funds down a little bit. I assume that's from that brown park. Overhaul was pretty costly. The landscaping, I guess.
I haven't seen it. Four million in a while.
Looks like our water wasn't quite what we budgeted. Eighteen thousand dollars.
We do add a little to the budget. So that they're not super close in there. So they don't have to amend. So that's actually pretty, pretty close.
Given that, though, I think this year, because we do have a lot of upgrades going in this year too, that'll be paid out, so this year will be a little, probably a deal.
Are you paying for your bond out of water and light fund, or? That's probably, I can ask Jamie.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think we earmarked it and put it in the surplus.
The say you put in $246,000 into the surplus this year, so.
And there's a portion of that that we saved off of renewing our contract.
Yes.
That we're planning on paying for the.
The bond, okay.
Yeah. And I'm not sure what did we decide to do out of the water tower. What's it come out of? It might have been the, the reserve, water reserve or?
The same one?
It could be.
No, the surplus is 71.
71, okay.
I think there was plenty we wanted to do that over. It was about five years. So I'm a little bit familiar with this year, but.
Okay, is council satisfied? Not mature?
Do we need to approve that, John?
Yeah, and Jamie, we had sent her a, our representation letter that has to be signed, but I can get it from you later. Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the audit as presented.
Second. Have a motion in a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. Moving on to department heads. Electrical Department, Jeff?
First off, I wanna thank the community for kind of bearing with us and helping us out a little bit over that cold snap we had into Marshall and Ryan for kind of getting the word out, like the school and places like that, to cut back, and just to the community. The community cut back, you know? And, you know, like we discussed a little bit before we started, we saved about $174,000 by generating those four days or four and a half days and not having to buy at market price. We generated just over 53 hours for 67,400 KW, or 67.4 megawatts, on 4,498 gallons of diesel fuel. So the raw cost was just at 15 cents without overtime, but like I told you earlier, part of that is, is straight time, you know, during what the normal working day would be, and then some of it is overtime. So we're still under 20 cents. If we'd had more generation, we could have made more savings. But the way that the weather was at 15 below, I didn't wanna run that big engine because it runs on a cooling tower, and it would have turned that cooling tower into a great big popsicle. So would have damaged the engine, probably damaged the tower, you know, in the way it was. We stayed under the half-megawatt allotment of what we've been buying through Midwest Energy, so engine was rated at 1360, we averaged about 1,262 KW, so I think the guys did really well. We had to keep it on manually, we've got, we've got a PLC card that's burnt inside of it. I had made arrangements to get it fixed before that deal, but we were waiting on, you know, I'd bought, the council allowed me to buy a, a filter rack to change the filters on that number five engine, and they sent the filter rack, and it was the wrong one, and I was wanting to get it all done, where I only had to pay one trip charge for him to come out, and it backfired. We got the wrong one and sent it back, and the other one didn't come, so we had to have MidStates come anyway. But we're gonna get the card replaced. Like I said earlier, we've got some soot problems coming out of the exhaust on that Caterpillar in a couple places, but that, that exhaust is completely wrapped, so without taking it apart and finding out exactly where it is, we've got Caterpillar coming out to help us look that over and see what the deal is for sure. But it's nothing major, I'm sure. You know, I thought we did really well. The guys got a pretty good lesson in what it's like to stay up all night and do that, which we did. We went in on Monday morning at 5:00 and stayed till Tuesday night, about 10:00 before they let us shut down. Then we were back Wednesday morning at 5:00 again, so. It was a good, it was a good experience, but we didn't have any trouble at all, no hiccups whatsoever. We got a transport load of fuel less than eight hours after I called for it, so I was thankful for that. Price on the fuel was 218, which I thought was pretty fair looking at what it's done this week, so. We still, we've got about, I don't know exactly for sure, but over 7,000 gallon on hand now, so I think we're in pretty good shape. But other than that, just the same old stuff, just clean up afterwards, and we're doing some, we're gonna replace a pole tomorrow, and we're doing some, we got the piping done on the new filter system for that engine, but we're waiting on them to come back with a thermostat before we can charge it and get it kicked back off, but nothing major, just daily stuff, you know, so we're doing fine.
Congratulations to you and your crew for keeping the lights on, so to speak, during that rough period.
You're more than welcome.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff?
On fuel, Jeff, how much do you guys use a year?
Depends on how much we run.
I'm just wondering.
I burn 90 gallons an hour with that Caterpillar for every hour it runs.
You guys, you guys get your own equipment and stuff out of there too, right? Your equipment?
Yes, yeah, the road equipment comes out of there too. You know, we average less than a tank, than a tanker full a year normally, you know, as far as road equipment and that, but that big engine runs 160 gallon an hour, so I mean, if we run it very much, you know, it comes down pretty quick.
I was just, the reason I'm bringing it up is to buy fuel before it goes up.
We average, we average a transport load a year, sometimes two. You know, we budget 25,000 a year in the power plant fund, plus we budget about a tanker load out of the street department. So I buy from one one time, one in the other, we'll split it, you know, to keep the budget balances the way they are. But I try to watch it, if it looks, you know, we gauge those tanks. But I try to watch it if it looks, you know, we gauge those tanks monthly, so. We try to watch it if it's, if we're using a lot of fuel to kind of see what the market's doing. If it does look like it's going down, then we'll buy some. If not, we'll just set, you know.
Just let us know.
Yeah, we got plenty, so.
It's going up quick already.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, that four days. It was, it was half of what the other one would've run, but still. You know, we try to not let it get below about six thousand gallons at all if we can keep from it, because that's not very much engine time. You know, this time of year if the weather turns and we have to run. But like I say, uh, I bought, we've bought fuel from Hamppels for the last seven years since I've been back and we've bought before, from before and they've always been really good about getting us in line and getting fuel in when we needed it, so.
Just let us know.
I'll be more than happy to. But like I say, thank all of you for, you know, what you did. Everybody in the community, I mean, it, it, you can't imagine. Unless you watch that panel board, you can't imagine how much a few little things will make a lot of difference, you know. And, and I know that it was cold. I know people's bills are gonna be up tremendously, a lot of them. Because of electric heaters, things like that, you know, but. I think for the way things went, I think it was a, you know, it could've been a whole lot worse, so anyway.
Alright, well, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Have we ever had to generate on a deal like that ever and?
We ran, we ran uh seven days, eight days in the late eighties in a snowstorm when we lost our time. But uh, other than that, you know, a few times for a short period of time, but never more than a few hours, but yeah. Yeah, we've done it where we had to do it in shifts, you know, and if, if that engine would've been acting right. And it would've been to where it could hold itself on the board, we wouldn't have paid any overtime. I'd have split guys up, you'd have worked eight, whether it was midnight to eight or what it was, and there wouldn't have been a dime's overtime, you know. But the way it was, I mean, you constantly had to stay at that panel board and just watch it, so. You know, one guy kept the other one awake in the middle of the night, but we just cruised on through it, you know, we're good, so.
Thank you very much.
And it'll just get better, you know, if we, and, and like Aaron Romy from Midwest Energy told me, if we'd had more. You know, this number that I gave you would've been considerably more than what it is. Because we could've pushed some back to them, you know, and helped them out too. We'd have had another mag and a half or a little over, so. There'd have been a tremendous savings. There would've been a nice payment. But it's not here, you know, but it is for the next time, something happens, so anyway.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on to water department. Jason?
Uh, the main one I have is on the pool and uh, you guys should've had these sheets correct.
Yep, yeah.
On the back one, if you remember, last year I threw this out there of getting rid of that dirt inside there, the grass. And I'd like to try to get that done this year. And this is, it's gonna fluctuate a little bit, cause this is still last year's bid, but I do not see any of the concrete going up considerably from last year or not even a year ago. And then, but I, I was hoping that you guys would sit there and let me go ahead and get this, get that dirt out of there and fill it with concrete. And I was gonna, if you let me, I was wanting to get some umbrella stands that sinks down in that concrete and that way they just have a cap that goes over and if she pulls them, it'll be flush with it and, and then that way she can have a couple of umbrellas in there. That was the main thing, I wanted to check on the water. If I can get that done, and I'll start getting, start getting the work guys going on that too.
I'm good here. What, do you think we need some extra concrete in there?
I just, I just threw it out there.
I mean, it's just, we're not driving on it, it's just.
Right.
Yeah. You think you guys want to pour this in, Jason? Is that, is that what this is for?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I volunteer my time. Whenever you guys do it, let me know.
Sure.
I'll pour.
If you're okay with it, I'll, we'll get, we'll get it going on.
Yeah, I think it needs to be concrete, for sure.
Be a lot less fun than well.
Lot less dirt and a puddle. And grass and everything else.
Okay, in the sewer, just let you guys, whoops, sorry.
We'll have time for that, Jason?
We're gonna try to make time.
Okay.
I might, uh, the only thing is, I'm saying we might have a little problem with, we might have to pull a pole just to get the hole, the backhoe in there. And so we can get that dirt work loose, but other than that, take the fence down. So yeah.
Do you think that price would be close?
I'm thinking that, yeah. I, I, I don't think the rebar's went up much. And the saddles are just those plastic saddles, I'm sure they didn't. The only thing is, I'm thinking the concrete's pretty close, maybe three hundred at the most more, if that.
Nothing's went down. It's changing, it hasn't gone up. I mean, can't you just, can't you just do it and we approve the invoice afterwards?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, yeah, I mean, if you guys are, that would be great.
No, I mean, I, I would vote women in the three thousand eight hundred eighty, or three thousand, two thousand.
I mean, I'd say like forty-five hundred, up to forty-five hundred. Regardless, so let, let's approve up to forty-five hundred and let them get after it.
And that's the four inch, correct?
Yeah, four inch concrete.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think if you double that.
That's more than enough, five.
We'd be pouring it before next meeting, Jason?
No. No.
Get us updated, just sure, updated price and then we'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Might be the best.
I mean, they could, if, if they did have time, they could go ahead and start cleaning it out and getting it ready.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just update it so we got a better price.
Nothing's went down.
Right. Well, I just didn't want to get the hole started and then I was saying, well, God, you know. Okay.
Started.
Sure. And then just letting everybody know, we're gonna start sewer cleaning tomorrow on the northwest side of town, for that whole section. And we got the, filled out the uh, door knockers and got them out as well. So that way we'll, everybody will cover their sewer traps up, so. And that's about it on the water sewer.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns under uh, water department? Okay, moving on to street, street and first apartment.
Well, well, we got the, got the ditches cut on eight and got the culverts in today, so. Hope it looks good, hope everybody's happy with it.
It looked good.
Thanks.
They get out there, did, did they get done out there?
Yeah, I'm hoping that, I don't know when they're gonna start the rock, but uh, when they do, we're just going to go right out on top of the culverts and.
They still don't start the rock yet, right?
Right, but yeah, when they do.
Oh, okay.
Because yeah, it's electrical, I have to get in there and everything.
I haven't got the wire picked up yet, but it'll be a short notice deal, you know, and we'll get the conduit stuck. Trans, they just got done today. And then they can go ahead and put the rock in before we ever pull the wire, you know, so.
Yeah, we just got it done today, but we.
Something to be considering.
Pulling out right behind us.
I mean, Eighth Street from the entrance to the highway, I mean, I drove it right before the meeting. It is really soft right now because they pulled that up. We need to be considering um.
I think eventually we rock it from the, from the west driveway clear to the highway.
Yeah, no question.
I think we just rock the whole thing and put that three inch or five inch in there and just rock it and pack it in and.
Something else we all need to do is, it's, it's gonna rain Thursday night, there's a good chance that we all need to go out there and look. And just, and make sure we're not missing anything and what, what way everybody's going and the water and just look it all over. All of us need to try to get time to do that. The road and the, the truck lot, make sure we're not missing anything. Because it's nice and bare and it's gonna take water the worst, it's gonna handle it the worst right now as ever.
Okay.
And uh, we finished the, the crack filling for the year. And the last, I, I worked this up real quick, uh, there's a map on there. I wanted to show you guys what we, it's gonna try to seal, I would like to try to seal. And it's uh, all of Fourth, all of Broadway, all of Lammerow. And we're gonna fix that intersection down there in Lammerow where it meets Main. It's kind of ate up real bad, so I just like to do it all.
Where it meets Broadway.
Yeah. And uh, all of Santa Fe and all Third. Try to, I don't want to push too much, but the more we get these streets better off, it will be.
Your note down here about removing that rock?
Yeah, Jeff came up with that and we were just talking about it and I was just wanting to know if you guys would want us to dig that down about six or more inches, get rid of that rock and lay some asphalt in there and seal that too, up to the tracks.
I would do that.
At what time it was that way? He asked me about it and said, well, what would the railroad say? And I said, the railroad's not gonna care. You know, we've discussed some things with them, they've never replied, so. I don't think they'll say a word, you know, it's, I think that, I think that approach is as good as they're gonna make it. We thought at one time it might get better, but after we didn't close.
Yeah.
Prairie Street, that kind of put the end to what they were gonna do, you know. So I think it's as good as it's gonna get, but if we can asphalt it up too there. I think that, I think the farm trucks, I think everybody will, it'll just be a whole lot better. It will be near as dirty. It'd be easier to maintain, you know. There's a few, there's, you know, several hundred yards asphalt it'll take to do it, but I think in the long run, it's, it's a money saving deal, I really do.
And it's a north, north and south.
North and south, yeah, get them tied together with what's already there. You know, we've got a spot there at West Ross's that's gonna have to be repaired anyway. We're in there ripping stuff up and straightening it out, why not go clear to the tracks?
Yeah.
Well, I can sure guarantee you that I'd rather put more money down there than on any of these other streets, so if it gets tore up in the next couple of years, we can, as long as the trucks are using it.
It's helped, yeah, it's helped the trucks tremendously, you know, by, by using that. And I, you know, I think it just, if we can get it laid down and get it thick enough, we're getting it packed in good. You know, we'll solve a lot of problems, maintenance too, so.
I missed it, Jason, but you're gonna mill the sides, kind of like you've been doing in the past years, yeah?
Yeah, see, we were, I talked to Jamie and I told her to call the other Jamie about getting the, that uh. Other, yeah, the other zipper. And then I think we could sit there and have the small one and get that one with the new loader now and we could probably go to town. And get a lot of that chewed up.
Do you know Deser's, will it do basically the same thing ours does without, I mean?
Yeah, you can set it, you can set it to wherever the, I said the loader.
Can do whatever you want, yeah.
So we aren't milling out a whole bunch of?
Right.
Yeah.
It's a mean machine.
And it's, and it's uh, it's self-driven, I mean, the engine's.
Yeah, it's a. You just put diesel in there and start it up.
Put it on that bucket and just down you go.
Chain it up to the bucket and just lower that right where you want it there and just keep it right there.
Be a whole lot cleaner ride that way, inside that cab, because it'll be a dirty deal. I think that loader's healthy enough that it can hold it pretty easy, should be able to.
Yeah, it'll be going circles around the little guy.
Oh, yeah.
Is that chip rock you've been using, it's the same thing as what you used last year?
The chat, yeah.
Or chat?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And that being said, what I would like to do is like, I called uh, I called them, got a quote for the chat. And on this page right here, I sat there and talked to uh, everybody except I didn't get ahold of Phil. And last year there was three thousand US gallons for a tanker load of that polymer, so I just sat there and uh, uh, or six thousand, I just doubled it. Because that's pretty, we're a little bit over, but I just got you a close run of right there what's gonna be. But the chat, the chat is the price that she gave me on the page after that for Porneo. And uh, I would like to go ahead and start getting that in, so whoever you get, Bobby, if you want to keep it in town. So that way he has plenty of time to start stockpiling that over there before we have it out. And that is the, that it will be the price up there for eight, eight hundred thirty-three tons. If my math is correct, or the computer's math is correct. But the, the hauling prices are correct. And then uh, the uh, chat prices, the rock, three H rock is correct.
Will it be the same timeframe as last year, like August and counting?
That way we got plenty of time and I'd like to start milling soon as, uh, cause I was gonna turn two of the guys out on exercising valves. And we'll go get that machine and two of us can start in eight, first of April. And, cause it's gonna take a bit to get all this done. I would like to start chewing that up.
So you're just wanting to get the?
Okay for the chat. And then uh, whoever you want to haul it. And if you want, like I said, Bob's hauling and then, and then chat price.
So the chat price is twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, thirty thousand, mm-hmm.
And then this is the hauling down here between Bob and the other one?
Yeah.
I mean, the oil.
The oil, I have not got, Phil has not uh, got back with me on the total oil prices. But uh, I just, like I said, it was six thousand gallons last year, so I just doubled it.
Twelve thousand.
And that, the price of that oil's, and my, it's probably went up, so don't take.
That's why I was bringing it up, like I wanted to approve that tonight, but.
Yeah, no, we can't, we can't approve that tonight.
It'd be nice to have him next meeting if you can.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to get him to get that price for it.
I'm okay with the rock.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd uh, me personally, I'd just soon let Bob haul it.
Yeah.
I, I think for three thousand dollars difference, he probably spends that in St. John, Kansas. Whether it's utilities, taxes, fuel buying stuff, um. That's just my opinion on it. I just went give it in and let him haul it.
Sure.
And if they get started now, they'll have plenty of time to get it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he's, well, he's gonna give me a short notice there last year, so I'm gonna give him plenty this year, so.
Yeah, we did give him cash.
Do we got a place to put eight hundred thirty-three tons of it?
Put it south of plant. Oh, we'll fill up that one over there and then we'll put it south of plant.
We can keep it separated from the other stuff.
As much as we can over there, but, yeah.
This is obviously a little more aggressive than we've done in the past, but our budget will stay in that, I, I mean.
Like we've been spending six-two thousand a year and not getting anywhere near this much.
I know, but I mean, we're at seventy-five and that seventy-five can turn into ninety pretty easy and that's one and a half times a six.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that, I'm, like I said, the twelve thousand, it could be fourteen by the time of year.
Yeah.
Because I, I, he likes to figure that, so I let Phil figure that on what the basis of how much uh, of rock.
I just, that's what I mean. I just want to make sure not only you bite off more than we can chew, or, or bite off more than we.
I understand that, yeah.
No, I'm fine with approving the chat and having Bob do it, it's fine with me. Forty-five, estimate about forty-five thousand bucks, I guess then, right? Yeah, a little over, forty-five, forty-five.
Yeah, for him to haul it, yeah.
Forty-four, forty-four, five, forty-four, forty-four, six, something like that. It needs to be done.
We're getting a lot done for that. I just think it's really good.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I don't want to push it, but I, I just like to get, get it going. Because it, it seems.
Coming from?
It's out of Boochdahl, hydraulic, off a hydraulic stream. But it's just, I just want to, I just see so much of this street just cracking spider webbing out, it's just. I like, you know, just let's keep on it going if we can.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
I think we're having better results off of that polymer oil than what we had off that straight oil too. You know, even as cold as it's been down on First Street, I've noticed you don't see that, you don't see the stress marks in it like you usually do from cold and warm, you know. So it's evidently stretching to a point over that temperature and it's holding that seal good, it seems to be. So I think it was probably a good decision to start using that, I really do.
I just really like to have the oil deal by next meeting if you can.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get it, mm-hmm.
It's crazy, I want to, it's gone up in a month and a half.
That's why I said, please don't pay attention to that part.
This is really good though, Jason, I'd like, it looks good.
Okay, thanks.
I'd make a motion to buy eight hundred thirty-three tons of number two granite chat for twenty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'm making a motion to pay Bob's hauling to haul that eight hundred thirty-three tons of fifteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, under a minute, I think that's about it.
Okay, unless anybody has any more questions for Jason, we'll move on to police chief, Chief Adams.
I have nothing.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for a chief? Okay, have we heard anything from the fire chief, Chief Sanders?
He's not on fire.
He's not on fire, okay.
Last I knew, he's putting a tree up.
A lot of trees.
You do have that on the list, Jason, for the hydrant out at the station?
Yes.
Is it on the list?
It's laying on the sh, it's laying at the shop. Yeah, yeah, part of it there and part of the heavier stuff's at the shop.
Okay, moving on to city administrator. Okay, moving on to City Administrator.
So, the, we have to refund that amount back to Mid-Continent because their electric meter, when we switched them out, their multiplier wasn't like sitting up right on our billing system. They have three meters total and the other two is, the multiplier is 160, but this one's 80. But when we changed them out, it, they all got changed to 160. So, basically this meter has been paying doubled this whole time. So, this is the amount that we need to be refunding back to them. So, I mean, we can cut a check or we can put that credit back on their account and just let them use it over time. But they turn that pump off. So, their bills are not that like $100 maybe a month. So, that's going to take a very long time to use up that credit. So, it might be better to just cut a check and deal with.
That would be easier for your guys' books too as well, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would.
Get a check squared up immediately and just move ahead like it didn't happen.
Right.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'm making a motion to refund Mid-Continent 14,645.6.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, if there's nothing else, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Pam? Okay, moving on, City Attorney, John.
I don't have anything.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving on to Old Business. Is there anything on Old Business we'd like to discuss this evening?
For some of those houses, did we give a deadline for, is that, is that in March? And when was that? I thought it was like this meeting or maybe it was next, I guess, the, our second March meeting.
I think that's what it was.
So, the next, I can remember, so.
I think that's, I don't think I put that in my phone.
Yeah, I can remember. But everyone was made aware of that, so.
Right.
Yeah, it was 808, wasn't it? And.
East Fifth.
East Fifth.
647.
47, yeah.
Yeah, the North Broadway one.
Yeah.
808 North Broadway.
Yes. Yeah.
All right. Unless there's anything else we'd like to discuss, there's no new business. Move on to executive session, a five-minute executive session to discuss employee evaluation. Who do we want to table everyone around the table?
Should we do both these at the same time?
We don't, we just need, we just need the one, yeah, the second one, what's that?
Who holds the net?
Yeah, who holds the net? So, include everybody around the table and yourself, Chief?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll resume at 7:58. Hold this meeting back to order. I have a motion on the table.
I'm making a motion to move Desmeltin to 17 dollars an hour as per his valuation.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, having no more business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Meeting adjourned.